All right, so I will reconvene the meeting at 7:07. And is there anyone from the public who wishes to make a comment? I guess not. So we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of minutes from August 15th and August 28th. A recommendation for professional appointment?
No.
No, we don't. So that, I'll just say that's not part of the consent agenda and the approval warrants. So let's, Kim, you just said that we've removed approval and recommendation for professional appointment from the consent agenda because there were none. Okay. Is there anything else that anyone wants to pull from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Thanks, Brendan. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay. Thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to a public presentation on health care savings. As you all know, the state passed a law requiring that districts, well, resulting in districts receiving less money from the state than they otherwise would have, based on how much the state deemed that the district could save by going to what they called the state model health care plan. So Brian's going to help us with what we've learned so far.
Thank you. So some of this has been out. I thought the Essex reporter did a great job. I know that some of the other media outlets have also been covering this recapture aspect. We actually kind of start a while ago, and if you recall, it was near the latter part of the legislative session when it became clear, at least to the administration, that there was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity in which all the health insurance plans for all school employees were going to change effective January 1st, 2018. This was really predicated on those plans coming up to speed and catching up with the Affordable Care Act. So they all needed to be modified and redesigned in that there was the movement of those plans to move towards the more high deductible world, lowering premiums, but then also adding different components of HRAs and HSAs, health reimbursement accounts, which would be operated by the employer, or health savings accounts, which are operated by the employee and contributed to by the employer. So there was a feeling that there was going to be some realized savings, and there was some encouragement originally projected that there could be savings seen in the magnitude of $26 million. And over the course of the legislative session, particularly with the budget bill and with the yield bill, we ended up in a sort of a stalled situation that went to a special session and what was going to be potentially a veto override, but then ended up becoming a negotiated agreement that left us with Act 85 or H 542. So this captures the concept that there are going to be savings because there's going to be a change, and it then establishes a target plan and says that districts need to be, or should be able to, yield a certain savings, and that savings will be calculated for them, and then that savings will be extracted through a recapture process, which will actually be a lowering of educational funding in the second payment that would come later in the spring. And it works off of a process of taking the VHI plan, their gold consumer-driven plan, and then comparing it to our costs. So the target plan is the 80-20 target plan. It's the premium split that we would be expecting. That is not where we currently are with our teachers and with our support staff. And it would be going in and using a, towards the deductibles of 21, 42, and 3,800 are specified in the law as out-of-pocket expenses, and that we would have 100% contribution to HSAs and 60% contribution to HRAs, and that school employees would be paying first dollar. So those are the, that's the target plan. That's the plan that we are then being compared to.
Could you explain what employees paying first dollar on deductibles means?
So it's, it's been, it would be a process, in the consumer-driven health plan, there is a process which the deductibles being sort of larger deductibles or more out-of-pocket expenses, a lot of times mechanisms are built in so that first dollars would be paid for by HRAs or HSAs. There's a particular interest to induce or to adjust utilization by having first dollars. So these are more in the realm of, I believe they're 400, 600, and 800 are the first-dollar expenditures that the state has in the target plans. But it's to make sure that as people are utilizing their health care, that they have first and full dollar involved in those decisions initially, so that there's a feeling that that will help impact utilization. It may impact utilization on preventive care. So it has a series of different research to it, whether the first and full dollars are in it. But that would be the process of their target plan is to make sure, and I think they do that because then there's an actuarial kind of projection of, well, what would that mean and do to health care costs over the long term and make it sustainable, though, you know, that still is just, it's just a modeling. But first dollar is a particular item they've called out to be in the target plan. So what we do is, since all the plans, VHI froze their rates for 18 months. So that's all of FY '18, or it's all of, it was all of FY '17, and the first six months of FY '18, the rates have remained the same for the health plan, with the idea that all the plans and all the rates would change January 1st, six months into FY '18. So what they do is they take a look at one half of the district's share of costs in FY ' '17. They take a look at all the health care costs that the districts absorbed. And of course, we're looking at multiple former districts that now make up the new aggregate EWSD district. So we take a look at that cost, and we say, well, that cost for half of FY '17, that's probably what you will absorb in the first half of FY '18. And then we'll take our model plan with the assumptions that we have, and we'll create a second portion of FY '18. And then we'll add those, we'll inflate that overall cost by 5%, which was a number that was in the law. It's not related to inflation or anything else. It was just that it will be inflated by 5% to come up with a sum of money when we subtract that from our overall FY '17 costs. So this is, that we should see this kind of savings, and that's where we get the recapture amounts. The recapture amounts are going to be extracted or taken from, 65% of the overall recapture amount will be taken during FY '18, and the remaining 35% will be during FY '19. So that's how we get there. This is the numbers. So as calculated by the Agency of Education, the new EWSD as an aggregate of all the former districts, they're, they are looking to recapture 815,557. 65% of that will be this fiscal year, or basically $530,000. For CTE, which is a separate entity, which was one of the regional technical centers and is a separately voted upon budget, they will have a recapture total of 111,000, or 65% of that in FY '18 will be $72,000. Now, this will be money that does not come to the district. So this is, this, this won't be an expense to the district. It will be a revenue that was budgeted and anticipated that won't be realized from the state. So what we need to do is to ensure that there's offsetting reductions in expenses to make sure that we have, we continue to be in a positive state at the end of the year of fund balance. So the timing of this is that the district has until approximately April 30th before that anticipated cash flow from the state isn't realized. That would be when the second portion of the state funding would come to the district. Our next steps are to certainly capture any budgetary savings that we have through the course of the year. So that's a, that's a natural activity that administration goes through to try to make sure that savings are realized, and also where demands that we didn't anticipate are addressed, so that if we have additional students that move into a district, or we have different needs or different budgetary requirements. We're going to monitor closely the teacher and support staff negotiations that the board is heading up and working on that. And that obviously, since this is all about health care, it's one of the key elements being bargained during the collective bargaining and would have a sizable impact on us making or being able to absorb the recapture. And then finally, you know, in just in the sort of the top three categories of actions that we'll be taking, is that we'll assess the options to utilize prior year fund balance or carryover. We'll take a look at what other schools are doing, particularly technical centers, because that impact will be pretty significant to the technical center. And we'll be looking to see what we can pass along potentially in allowable tuition or other costs that we have for the fiscal year. That's a primer of kind of what it is and how we're taking it on. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions?
Is there an assumption to be made that so we'll be very careful, the hiring process this year, like when we have nutrition?
Vacancies?
Vacancies, that we're careful what positions we're going to fill?
Yeah. We've, you know, there's a, there are a number of positions that were budgeted that either have not been filled or are vacant and will continue to remain vacant, or new vacancies that have come up that have been chosen not to be filled. So we're, we're in that process. We already know that there's a, there's a need for us to continue to be evaluating our size, our efficiency, and so forth for the taxpayers. And, you know, part of the merger promise is that we'll have some efficiencies, financial efficiencies and savings, so.
One of the frustrations, though, of how this calculation was done was that it doesn't recognize the reductions in staff that we already made. So it's based on our FY '17 employees, which is discouraging.
Yeah.
Yeah. Andre. Oh, wait, Brendan was first time, sorry.
Question on how vacancies will get filled should the need arise. Do you anticipate impacting, at what level, the new hires will come in? Do some of the new hires come in at a higher rate or lower rate? Do you anticipate having that type of discussion in regards to how you're going to fill, whether you'll go for like a first-year versus a fifth-year teacher?
I don't, you know, where my mind was at is, is in areas outside of instruction right now, is to try to really scrutinize those areas inside of shared services and administration and in support staff. I know that the, you know, the discussion has come up in the past about hiring somebody that comes in well up the salary schedule because of either years of service or education or a number of credits. But again, those are really highly qualified teachers that are coming in to impact our student learning. So, yeah, I think right now we're certainly looking, I mean, the finance office itself has a vacancy that we won't fill, permanently we won't fill it. So those are the kinds of situations that don't have a real student impact, but have a real meaningful budgetary impact.
Thank you.
Okay. Brendan?
So Brian, for the sake of people who aren't at this meeting, but who may have a question about why we wouldn't look to the transportation dollars, I think it might be good, because it did come up in the Essex reporter article, to just address why we wouldn't necessarily want to look there for a way to sort of bridge this gap.
Well, we anticipate this postponement of transportation in Essex Junction to be addressed with some viable solutions in November and to make sure that it's part of the budget going forward. So we, you know, a savings in transportation is not long-term. It's temporary. It also was made, the investment in expanding transportation was really discreet and was really public, and it required a great deal of resources that the community supported in passing the budget. And I think using those resources because of circumstances for this is certainly not a first stone to turn over. So, and this is not just a one-year expense, that we have 35% of this recapture that has to take place in the subsequent year, when we don't anticipate having transportation savings. So we would, we'd be able to secure some, but then we would leave a further cliff in the next fiscal year. So our hope is that that money gets returned into the fund balance and helps us with subsequent years in lowering tax rate or preparing for other costs.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Brian, the other piece of what bothered me to some degree about what the state did is they didn't recognize in any way savings that districts might have already budgeted for. We had known for 18 months ahead of building the budget that these new plans were coming and that they were cheaper. So I just, mostly for the benefit of the public, I just want to say that that was another piece of frustration, is that districts that hadn't budgeted for savings end up in a better place than districts like ours that budgeted responsibly because we knew there would be savings, and we don't have a place to go to get this money.
Yeah, I think, you know, that there's two issues that are really tough. This is a very dynamic cost for us. We have people that change plans from one person to two-person, family back down to two-person to one, very dynamic. We have cash in lieu in which their spouse or significant other could lose their benefits, and they come on. So this is not a static number. So using an April static number from the previous year is problematic. And for places like the Center for Technology, that to get into an FY '18 budget reduced their FTE, their personnel, by more than two, that there's, there is, they've already delivered on savings to the community and to the taxpayer, and now there's an anticipation that there still remains savings, and that's difficult to deliver. I think the final part of it, and maybe it was done with some of the 5% escalator, but it's to, you know, when we're, when we're looking at this, it is not a, when collective bargaining and negotiating, you don't necessarily always receive 100% of your savings on a singular item in a multi-bargained kind of element. You know, that there is some leveraging of one item to another based upon where the various parties see. So this really presumes 100% of the savings. Like you wouldn't change this around to change any of the structure of your, of your salary schedule. You wouldn't do any incentivizing of extra duty. You wouldn't change, you know, it's just 100% of the savings within a, really a menu of 45 items that you're bargaining. It's really rare that you would get 100% of your savings.
I think, too, in unifying the contracts, there were differences in benefits offered. And to
Oh, could she, no, could she use the mic?
Oh, just in, in unifying the contracts, there were differences in the features offered under each that to come to commonality had some expense to them and were considered as part of the entire package of things that might, where savings might be achieved through comparable health care plans, could consider where those funds would go to serve to unify the contract. So there's a lot not considered in the formula of the law, unfortunately.
Brendan?
So, you know, a major component of the FY '18 budget development process and communication to the community had to do with the property rate discount that Essex Westford School District was eligible for through Act?
Forty-six.
Forty-six. How does, how does that, how is that affected by this, if at all? I mean, we were expecting a certain amount of quote-unquote savings through that reduction, and is this, is that considered in part of this calculation?
I think it's not part of this calculation, and I don't think that it impacts the FY ' '18. It is part of the conundrum of how this all works in FY '19. You know, so in FY '18, you pass a tax rate. That tax rate went into your communities. They received the pay-down of that sort of relief, and we're going to get a certain amount of tax dollars from the community. And then the state is going to short us a certain amount of money for a recapture purpose. We have to make it all work. Like we don't get to go back and say, hey, you know that two cents relief? We need that now before June 30th. So we don't get to go back and rebuild. Going into '19, we have a two-cent increase, in theory, just by the, by the change, and now we've got to try to figure out how we come up and deal with the next 35% of the recapture. So that has this way of maybe diluting the savings that the community would expect, because now we have this, this non-fiscal year expenditure that we've got to absorb.
And I wouldn't expect that we would do this, but one of the possibilities would be for us to run a deficit in order to deal with this, in which case we'd then have to come up with that money and have one '19 as well. I don't expect that we're going to do that, but that is potentially the way some districts will deal with this. Andre?
With the anticipated cuts that the state's going to force upon us, we have to absorb that loss of revenue, but it's not necessarily absorbing it in actual savings from the targeted health care per se. It's just a general reduction that we absorb throughout the whole budget, and then the second year is another reduction. Is there, anyone have a semblance what the third year will bring us? I mean, does someone have a Aladdin's lamp to look into or?
There's a commission looking at this, and until they come out with their report, I don't think it's, I don't think anybody knows.
Thank you.
Kim?
Do we know, Martha, if the commission's been named, and if the commission includes folks who've negotiated contracts, or is it the same folks that had the earlier conversation to create the law? Just wondering.
I do, I do know the commission has been named. Unfortunately, I can't remember, I can only remember one name, and that's George Cross, the former superintendent, Frank Winuski, who certainly has lots of experience negotiating contracts. Yes?
Got a housekeeping question. Brian, will this be available, this presentation you gave us on the EWSD site, so that Kim can just reference it in the minutes instead of worrying about all the?
Yeah, I'm trying to set these up now so that they can, just like the transportation ones, just go up and sort of live on the board site.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
I guess, there's one part that I guess I, if I could just throw in. So we lead the state in the gross dollar amount that's going to be recaptured, but that, that number reflects only approximately 0.87 of our overall educational spending. There are districts that have a much lower dollar amount, but a much more significant, some of them are at 3.4, 3.5% of their overall educational expenses. So again, it's a little bit of that proportion of like 811,000 to us means less than 1% of our educational spending, where another district, it could be three, three and a half. So, you know, I think we are not alone in our concerns of what this impact are, even for districts that might be owing only 40, or 70, or 100,000.
And I sent you a link to the spreadsheets after our last meeting in August that shows you all those percentages. It's interesting. Yeah. Okay. Any last things? All right. Let's, let's move on. So the next section is school board business, and the first thing we want to talk about is the annual work plan and the budget development calendar. So the annual work plan is from the work we did at the board retreat, and thank you all for the great work you did that day. And then Brian has a draft budget calendar for us to think about.
I would like to add to the top of this work plan, or the five focus areas that you came up with at the board meeting, and I will do that. I'll put it at the top of the work plan.
Good. So all of whom received this in your board packet, do you have any questions or comments at this point? Does it look like what we talked about? Anything glaring in your mind that isn't there or is in the rotten place that you thought about after the retreat? We probably will add things to this as the year goes on, but this can be our beginning structure. And this, in a sense, outlines our goals for the year.
I have a question. This is not the work plan that we'll be basing a superintendent's evaluation off of?
This is the board's work.
Okay. Just checking.
Okay. So Brian, do you want to talk about the budget?
Yes. So we, as we talked, we included this in the board packet. It's kind of laid out, at least how we used to graphically present it a long time ago in the CCSU area, but it tries to use this process. And the yellow going through the 12 months are the regularly scheduled board meetings for EWSD. So those exist there. And then we start to run through and look at the pink ones that start to come up in September. This is when the principals' PLC group will be meeting and discussing operational items. So this is naturally going to be an ongoing theme of budgeting with them. As we get into November, that's when the building level, people really start to do their work, as well as the budget centers, and we need to sit down with now 10 different principals and review staffing. So some class-size work is going to have to come about. We'll need to look at that. We'll need to look at service plan that will be popping out, so we'll look at that. We'll look at some Title I planning. All of that stuff starts to happen in the month of November, so that we start to go in, and the central office has a lot of December into January to really be crunching the numbers, doing some of the final calculations, looking at the assumptions. We have information technology, property services, food services. We have, um, information technology, property services, food services. And principals all start to finish off their data in December to really come in and take a look at our first budget session. Could be the sixteenth of the month of January. Or we could have a regularly scheduled meeting there and come into the twenty-third. In all, between the sixteenth and the twentieth, which is about the last time that you'd want to, you'd want to make sure that things were to bed by the twentieth of January, we'll have one, two, three, four, five, we'll have six different opportunities. And we can kind of, you know, most likely kind of bring this in at a grade level basis, try to use some of our early visioning, what we want to accomplish, some of the aspects of, of, um, the student growths and outcomes and so forth. And then we go into a window where things have to be warned. Annual report needs to be to the printers by the fifth. And then we go into, um, a budget vote on the ninth, on the tenth. Ninth would be annual meeting. Your reorg would then be the seventeenth of April. And then we're back into regular schedule. So, this is pretty dynamic, obviously. I mean, I, I think what we try to do is, we try to show you what it is that we're working on accomplishing before we sit down to the first budget session. But, you know, that's pretty dynamic as we work, trying to fini- figure out, um, different budgets. What we'll have is a full operating budget for CTE, a full operating budget for EWSD, and a capital plan for EWSD would be the three items that would be voted upon. Yeah? Is there? I think it looks a little bit like last year for you.
Mm-hmm. It looks very similar, but saying it again, this year is just so wonderful not to have all these budgets that we, annual meetings. We had so many last year because it was our first year. I think the public is going to appreciate us a lot more this year, I hope.
Good point.
One calendar.
Just looks, it just seems like a relief compared to last year.
Yes, and we'll certainly hope we keep our COO through the whole process.
Me too.
That would be a relief.
Eight-three.
That still raises the question, the town and the junction still somehow trying to, that committee that's trying to work in Westford?
I don't know if that, I haven't heard anything from that committee.
I haven't either. I'm thinking they wanted to look at a common voting time period, but you need a couple of years.
I think they're having a very hard time making that work. But we'll see. Questions, comments? Getting those dates on your calendars, please.
Oh, we forgot something.
You don't have any free Tuesdays is basically the answer.
I think it should.
Keely?
Uh, I believe at some point we had discussed, um, the possibility that at some point in the future, our meetings would move to a Monday because that was like where all the meetings used to be or something. And then once the legacy boards are wrapped up, there would no longer be a conflict. Is that something that would be discussed after the reorganizational meeting in April? And not at all impact the budget development period?
Right. That, that's when you set your meeting dates for the year? So, yes.
That will be a great idea because just being clark and responsible for five days, having your, um, meeting minutes posted, that gives Kim an extra day to be able to get them because we are coming in to meet Tuesday night. And then we're having to get these done and end by Sunday. So, it doesn't sound like a lot to you guys, but it's been a lot for us.
Depending on whether you have free time before the weekend. Yeah. Well, we'll talk about that in this. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, let's, um, move on. So, the next item is the board self-evaluation review. And, um, what, uh, first of all, I will apologize to Liz. Ben could not bring up a version that included your responses. So, this version just has responses from nine members of the board. And we did talk about this once before, but we said we would come back to it. And what I think I'd like to do tonight is, I have picked out five items that I think, based on the responses, are worthy of discussion. And then if there are other areas that you think we should talk about, we'll do that as well. I think this was a hard year for self-evaluation because there were many areas where there were questions about work that we really weren't responsible for yet. And so, some people said, we're not doing it. Some people said, it's not applicable. So, I pretty much, I skipped those areas because there were different boards that were responsible for that work in the past year. Dan, do you have a question before we start?
I guess it's more of an observation is that it would depend on how individuals viewed, you know, is this something that boards should be doing? Or was, were they actually answering it in that fashion? Or were they answering things as to, are we really doing that? So, I mean, as I read today, I could see that a lot of individuals probably did both. It could have been a fifty-fifty. I wouldn't know without having the results in hand as to how, who, who viewed what and how. But I think that really impacts, um, how we look at this. Is, did someone answer it as to what was happening or what should be happening? Okay, because...
So, so, I think next year, when we do this, it will be much more relevant in many areas. So, um, and there are areas where it's work that boards, school boards should do, but it wasn't work that was appropriate for us to do last year. Yeah. So, the first one I wanted to talk about is question number eight. Brian, I don't know if you could pull that up. And that's policy review. And we haven't yet talked about, because we were spending all last year just getting our mandatory policies in place. And I believe the policy committee is probably going to have some work to do this year on some other policies that Beth is going to decide that we really need to have. That had to be our beginning focus. But I hope the policy committee will also talk about what kind of a cycle of review do you think is appropriate? And how would the task team like to undertake that? So, different ideas about that? Does that make sense? Do you think that's what should happen?
Yep.
Okay. Then, I think that's all the time we need to spend on it. We just need to be aware that it is something that we will have to start dipping. Then, question fourteen. Was, um, the board evaluates its performance in reading, uh, reaching established board goals. We didn't have board goals last year. One of my questions is, should we turn the work plan into a set of goals that then can be part of our self-evaluation next year? Or do you have some other idea about how we should approach this?
I could certainly take the five focus areas and turn them into goal-like wording and bring them back to you for you to look at.
Does that seem reasonable? I also think there are some things in the work plan that, like the vision. You know, that has to be one of our goals. There should be, is to have a vision for the district by the end of the year. Kim?
I was just going to say, that's what I was, I was thinking that my only hesitation in looking at that work plan as being our set of goals is that it's, some of it's transactional. And I would think about our goals as being sort of bigger statements of areas we'd like to grow. And then around which we might match some of those transactions, but have some bigger ideas about what goals we have in terms of our own growth and governance. And then, so I like the idea of looking at those, those five areas that we had talked about and seeing if that aligns well.
Okay. So, let's have Beth bring that back next time and make me, Kim and I can also work on looking at the work plan and seeing if we want to convert some of that into some goal statements as well. And then we should think of how, how we're going to measure the accomplishment of those goal statements. So, um, I think rather than having ten of us try to do it, if Kim and Beth and I work on a draft, then we can bring it back and the board can say whether it makes sense or whether they think there are things that don't make sense. Okay. Let's go to question eighteen. And, um, so this talks about the board engaging the community in setting budget priorities. So, last year, I would say we did a fair job of communicating with the public about the budget. But, um, my question is, is there some kind of engagement around budget priorities that we should be thinking about? Thoughts, ideas?
I guess my hope is that, um, we can get to a point where we're creating a solid line between the budget development and the student outcomes that we're hoping to achieve. Um, it's a, it's a challenging task, especially in the first full year. But I think that that's, that will help us, that will give us a way to engage the community more effectively in a conversation. That it's more than just the numbers and the spreadsheets. But it's, what is this amount of money supposed to accomplish? So, I think as we're working on the vision, as we're working on student outcomes, if we can tie that all back to budget priorities and be able to talk about those in terms of not just the dollars, but the outcomes, that's where I sort of hope we get to. But I realize that that takes time.
And then, in, okay. Um, Keely, Adam was first. Okay. Hal?
The other thing I was going to say is, I think we haven't really advised the community before the, the board budget sessions as to what those priorities are and to solicit some feedback. So, in the early January time break, or not necessarily late December because I, people are just too busy. So, but I think early January, this is where we seem to be going. These are our priorities, uh, questions and concerns, and solicit them in an active way. We rarely do that.
Keely?
I guess my question would be, is the best way to engage the community in setting budget priorities really through the board? Or are there mechanisms in place whereby community input to building leaders leads to setting budget priorities? Like, I've heard from a number of people, because of my professional background, that they really miss having Latin at the high school. But as a board member, like, I'm not going to sit down, like, tell Principal Reardon, we need to have Latin at the high school. But presumably, if all these people talked to Principal Reardon about the benefits of the Latin program they used to have, like, he would bring it up in the budget planning session. Or like, when the coach came to our budget planning session.
Right.
And like, clearly, there's a lot of community interest in what sports are offered and how their coaches are supported. But are we the people to be hearing that? Or are the principals of the middle schools the people to be hearing that?
The question is community.
Those are good questions to ponder and come back to, I think, soon.
That, leading off on that, um, the principal, the PLC operations meetings, they start already the end of this month. And in October and November, I'd be curious how the principals get their feedback. How, do they get feedback from staff? Or, um, I think that would help us know how we're engaging the public because the principals are hearing probably from parents within their schools. Is my assumption, but I would like to know how they set priorities because we've always gone by what has been brought to us, assuming that they're following the priorities.
I'm doing.
By the same token, Keely brought up a good point where people are advocating to the principals, what's not being presented or going forward. But when a decision is made at the building level to cut back on extracurricular or a program, it seems to me, we're made aware of that when it's brought forward to the board. But is the community engaged in that discussion prior to bringing it to the board? Is it, and in the number of years they've served on the board, I think the reaction has been when we present the budget, the community gets informed that this is being cut. But this is, the building leaders are the ones that are bringing that forward to us as part of the budget pro- process.
Something else to think about.
Yes.
Because, you know, I think about the fact that they're responsible for meeting some budget goals.
Sure.
And they're bringing forth their best thinking. Is it their responsibility or our responsibility to make the public aware of what their best thinking is?
All right.
Kim?
I'm wondering if, um, because this year, the process may be still different than last year. And last year's was still different than each of us maybe had had experience with previously in our, our legacy boards. We might all benefit from a little insight into what the process will look like this year and how, um, principals may work together in thinking about their equity issues across buildings, how they'll consider the goals, um, that Beth may set out for student achievement or other areas of equity achievement. And they're thinking together collectively, independently, in their own buildings. I, I think it'd be helpful for me and maybe all of us to understand the process this year and what you both envision of that process and what that feedback loop looks like back with information back to principals. That, because I think we had a unique situation last year, that felt a little disjointed. And...
Yeah. So, Beth, her thought that occurs to me as we're talking is, how, is there any way in which the vision discussions feed into the budget conversations? And maybe that's something that voices can do some thinking about, you know, whether that is a piece of it? Is that a place to get some public comment? Or is that going to just muddy the waters of vision conversation? So, um, yeah. Brendan?
I just think if we consider the attention from our community to be a finite resource, we may wanna think about how we, how we allocate it. And if it, I mean, it seems to me that given the strong support we received for the, our first budget and hoping that that will continue, we might wanna focus our community engagement more on the visioning work as opposed to, I mean, obviously, you know, meetings are public and people can come and share their thoughts, but I feel like that is time better spent engaging the community this year than necessarily the nuts and bolts around a budget. But that could be a very cynical view of how much opportunity we have to engage our community.
I hear you. Maybe it's more that the things that are starting to come out of that visioning conversation might help us think of how, what the community's priorities.
I think that's great. I think that's a great way to look at it.
Okay, that's a better way to think of it. Kim?
I was thinking along those same lines, but also thinking that I look at budget conversations as an opportunity to educate our community around sort of the priorities and in recognizing that not all equity will be achieved in year one, but as part of our process, we're identifying areas where we notice there to be disparities. And rather than just asking for people to throw at us what their wish list is, it allows us to take the initiative as educational leaders, us being really Beth and Brian and their work together, to share where their priorities are and, and what they're asking of their leadership to achieve certain things for kids. So I look at it as an opportunity to.
Yeah, I, I agree with that because our building leaders and our superintendent are the people who know best. So, but I do think we're gonna have to have a very strong communication plan so that people find out early what's on the table. Yeah, and they probably will be paying attention in some of the areas this year.
And, and just to add that the Voices work, as you all know, and I'm about to give that update, but includes a fifty-person body that will go through a ten-hour session around all of this, and so that group then hopefully will become ambassadors about, in the community, about what matters to people and will inform the process moving forward. So I would envision, I agree with Brendan, that in terms of a resource and what the community can take and that, that this is where the focus should be right now at this year, as we develop the budget. And I think we're already doing a good job every two weeks with updates and letting people know what's happened, and then when we have targeted issues of things that we really need to, to speak about between now, especially when we get into our equity work and talk about with the community that this is a priority of ours, that I think that that will help also as we move forward about getting priorities from the community.
Okay, good, good ideas, and good for that, and I'm sure Brian has taken it all in. All right, the next area I wanted to talk about was question twenty-one. And this is monitoring expenditure reports. And Brian, I should have talked to you about this ahead of time, but do you have some sense of how you wanna go about that? Are we gonna get quarterly reports? Or how are you gonna keep the board informed about where we stand?
Yeah, I was, again, it's, you know, still relatively new district for all of us as well as for me, but I was anticipating that we would have some first quarter reports, see where our systems and efforts to stabilize are, and then kind of proceed where the board wants to go. I, I know that we had moved over, at least when I was at the U forty-six level, we had started to receive information on a more frequent basis, but it was really kind of passive. I, I'd almost would wanna spend, I'd almost would wanna have more quality conversation about our financial work rather than a quantity aspect of it. And kind of move it out of a, a deep delivery of data and try to move into more of the what's it mean kind of aspect to it.
What's it meaning, where should we be concerned?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, I'm, I'm a little, that's a little bit more of where I come from and I think my strengths are, is to, to kind of boil the numbers down to a little bit of the, so what, what's the narrative?
Your piece.
And then I think that also becomes really easy for us to communicate to the public, because I, I don't think we can share a spreadsheet and say that we're being transparent. I think we need to share a story and be transparent.
But we also need to make sure that we are talking about that story, so that there are no surprises.
Yeah.
And we can take care, take advantage of opportunities if some present themselves. Okay, is that good for that? Any comments on that? Okay.
Question?
Yeah?
So my assumption is I heard Brian saying that we'd be getting first quarter reports so that we do like those four quarterly reports that we're used to on, I know, CCSU boards, but then you'd have a narrative piece?
Yeah, that would be delivered with a narrative and a, and I think a, a presentation to, to really kind of boil it down, take a look at it.
Both together.
Yeah. And then I think that it would be important that when we get our feet underneath us and we're really moving along, that, that on a regular basis, on a monthly basis, the information is shared, but we'll have a, we'll have a real intentional kind of visitation to that data on a quarterly basis.
That sounds good to me. All right, the last question that I wanted to focus on was informing the community of district performance. Now, clearly, that wasn't our responsibility last year.
What number?
Twenty-three, sorry. But it is something we're gonna need to work on this year, it's gonna need to be part of our annual report. So I just wondered if anyone had any comments about this or thoughts or, shall we just work with Beth to try to figure out the best way to do this?
Well, we do have in October is one of the sessions for sharing growth of students, so.
So that'll be a good chance to look at data and how it's presented, whether we think we want the presentation modified in any, in any way for the public, whether we think there's some additional data that we want and how we wanna go about, how the administration might wanna go about getting it, so. Okay. Keely?
I have not been involved in a board that had students before, so I don't know what sort of data is usually involved, but personally, in addition to numeric data, I think demographic data is very interesting. And it could also be helpful for members of our community who attended our schools but aren't aware of the different way that our new whole district is, things like what percentage of our students are rural, are we increasing or decreasing in how many students we have, how many are impoverished, how many speak languages other than English, how many people participate in sports? I have no idea, just things that might be surprising to people about the population that we serve.
Yep.
Well, I was thinking, what happened to school report night?
You know, 'cause I, I remember, remember those and not having kids.
When is the high school next week?
Not, not knowing that it is next week would be nice if it was publicized that if, if members of the public wanted to go. But it, things of that, if there's high school having a school report night, if there is other report nights, then we should be having that information out. At least that is one avenue for district performance. But I'm sure that there are others, not just the demographics, but it's, there, I've been invited to many presentations over, over the last spring, which were how things were going in various programs like ABA and some of the others. I felt that I gained something by going, I would have nice to have other members of the board there to experience it, but, you know, spring unfortunately is incredibly busy. But I think the community, if they knew that these things were going on, would be examples of how our kids are doing, that, that we and they could experience.
Do you think, in your experience, did members of the public other than parents attend school report nights?
Yes, there were some that were looking for, how much does this cost? And they were sitting there. So were there, were the lots of them? No, unfortunately, it was very low attendance, period. But it, it, now that we seem to be televising some things, if not that evening, then in arrears, it's an opportunity to get that presentation out there. And not, not, not the diminished voices, but it's another avenue.
Let's keep thinking about that. I don't think it's a state requirement. At one point it was. As far as I now know, it no longer is, but that doesn't mean that it's not something we should consider. All right, there was some more hands over here. Marla?
I guess some of the questions I have, when I think of district performance, is not just what, how kids are performing in school, but some of the things Keely said, I think are important. But I know Beth is new, Brian's new, but it used to be the Essex reporter would allow the superintendent to write a column or a piece, so I'm just wondering if that's one avenue that like Erin or Amy or some people could take on maybe some of that. I'm just thinking responsibility, at least that column used to be available?
Yeah, I, I think some things have changed, but I'm not sure if that's, Liz, you might know more.
There's that perspective, and we can work with the reporter on that, but I had a bigger, I think all of this falls onto a really solid communications plan, like you were talking about earlier. And Ben and Pat and I have talked about starting to do that in September and having a meeting where we really try to map out, like you've done with the calendar and the budget, to really figure out some of this stuff and dive deep into what, some of the, the best ways that then maybe our task team could bring back to the board to see if that makes sense. And I'd wondered if Brian and Beth wanna be part of that, at least the first meeting, where we try to, we have some things that are in a Google Doc right now with some ideas for messages to the community, including our board meeting messages and stuff, but I wondered if maybe we could have a meeting where we, where we really just try to bring something back to the board about a year and what that would look like.
Great. Brendan?
I think, you know, one of the things I, I'm used to in my former board work is knowing what things we're actually monitoring in terms of district performance before we communicate them. And I think in the absence of a vision and the absence of a strategic plan, I think it'd be great to hear from Brian and Beth at some point, like, what are the, what are some of the, of the stats that you're keeping your eyes on in terms of the district performance as you're sort of ramping up? And I think that would be good to kind of get your thoughts on that as we, not tonight, but as we, as we roll forward. I think we should discuss it as a board, but I also would be interested to hear, you know, what are the things that you're keeping an eye on as the, the new district gets underway?
Keely, did you have your hand up?
No.
Pat?
I mean, we do have a current mechanism with the takeaways every two weeks, especially after we get our feedback for performance, you know, coming up. I mean, I'm happy to write something a little more extensive in the takeaways, and then obviously since I submitted to Martha for approval anyway. I mean, I think that it's, at least, you know, the idea was that we wanted the takeaways to get out a little bit more anyway, and it seemed like the feedback was pretty good with my initial announcement on Essex VT about it. People seemed receptive to the idea. I'm just wondering if we can somehow maybe use that as an avenue to get regular feedback out there, 'cause I mean, it seems like that's exactly what we wanna have happen here, inform them of what our performance looks like.
So I think you can talk about that as part of the plan and how it fits into the plan. I have to say so far, I'm very impressed with the work that Ben is doing. You know, there's a mobile app, there's Twitter, there's the website, there, you know, there's just a lot of communication happening out there right now. I think as board members, if we don't have children in school, we're gonna need to sign up for some of these things that get in the habit of going to the website regularly. But I, I just would like to say kudos to Ben for the work he's doing so far. Anything else on this topic? Are there other questions on the instrument that I didn't pick out that you wanted to talk about?
Once the, at the very end of the, it said something about daily stats or something, it was the very last page.
Yeah, it was just how many people responded to the survey.
So that's just.
Oh, that's how many people responded each day in the survey.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and it's nothing to do with the survey itself. Yeah. It is pretty confusing though.
Well, I, I was out there in the, you know, out there in the ether, and I'm going, oh, what the heck is it?
So one of the things that Kim and I have talked a little bit about but haven't reached a conclusion on is, is there something we should do in terms of evaluation on a more regular basis, not just this annual evaluation? But Herb Board had a couple of questions that board members answered after each board meeting. Do you think we should try to develop something like that so that people have an avenue for giving feedback on meetings? Or do you all feel like if you have issues about something that happens at a meeting that you're really comfortable coming to me and talking about it? And we don't need a formal mechanism? Or would it be good to have a formal mechanism because it reminds you to be reflective? What are your thoughts?
I'd be curious what your thought process is as to what questions you'd be posing, because to evaluate or be looking at it, I would like to see consistency in the questions that we're looking at. And I think, I think after every meeting is a little bit much, I think monthly or, personally myself, I think monthly is fine.
Well, one of the questions that I've thought about, and I apologize, Kim and I, I just have been thinking about this in the last couple of days, so we haven't talked about it, but one of the questions I think we should stay focused on is, are we doing the essential work of school board? Or are we straying into the administrative realm? I think that's something we should be constantly reflective about. I think we've done, in my mind, we've done a good job so far, but I think it's something you have to always think about. Maybe there are one or two other things like that. You know, the question about. You know, the question about the meetings and whether they were run well and efficient had all positive responses. So right now, that doesn't seem to be an issue. But is there something we should be asking so that if something came up in the future, people would feel comfortable giving some feedback? Kim, Kaylee, Marla?
I was just thinking, maybe when we have an opportunity as a group to, to look at the goal statements and if we agree on the goal statements, we could have questions that are sort of our reminders to see, is the agenda planned to help achieve the goals? Are we making progress towards that? Are we future oriented? Are we doing policy level work and not administration? Like, there might be things that come out of our draft of our goals that help us stay focused on our work for the year. That would be good questions.
Brendan?
Kaylee?
I don't need to respond after every meeting. I feel like too much of what affects the efficiency and success of a meeting is just about interpersonal dynamics. Like, do I like how Brian does PowerPoints? Like, yes, good PowerPoint. Maybe I don't like how other people do PowerPoints. Like, do I think somebody at the table talks too much and somebody else, like, I don't understand what they say, so I wish they would talk more. I feel like it would be more helpful if you have particular things that you want us to focus on. I love the idea of homework and encouraging all of us to read that update from the VSBA on, you know, what it means to be governing rather than managing. Or think about some other thing and maybe then have a question like, what do you think about how we do at this thing you just read 300 words on? I feel like then I would have some sort of substantive input to give.
Let us think about that. We are planning some meeting exercises. They're more about equity, you know, things that board should be thinking about as they relate to students, not so much how the board does its work, but what the board's work is. But I'll think about that piece as well. All right. Anything else on the board self-evaluation that people want to talk about?
One thing that I noticed that one person under the three areas of improvements or someone said boards need to set the agenda, chair's agenda concerns not here, not heard, no time. So that stood out to me and I just wanted to say we, every meeting, we have a future agenda, board agenda, and I've never honestly felt like I haven't been able to give my input. I mean, there's probably some things I would rather we had talked about last year, but it was a time thing. So I just wanted to point out, if people have ideas, there's that piece on the agenda every meeting.
Thank you.
That is actually where we usually start our agenda building, when we have our agenda planning meeting, by looking back at future agenda recommendations or things we said as a group we were interested in. And it may not be for the very next meeting, but, but we keep that list going as part of our planning process.
And, you know, this year, we'll be focused on our work plan. So we'll have that tool to help us as well. Last year, we had some very discreet tasks that we had to accomplish. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for taking time to have this discussion tonight and for filling out the survey. We'll do it again at the end of the fiscal year probably, well, probably we should do it before the board reorganizes, so we'll think about that. But if you have other comments, don't hesitate to get in touch if you think of something after tonight, okay? All right. Communications, I think it's the only task team that has met since our last meeting, so.
So we did have a bit of an update last week at retreat about the Voices work, and that's really been what our focus has been right now, besides for the two takeaways a month that Pat has been doing, which I agree has been well received by the community. So the Voices update is that there's the event, that's the kickoff party that is happening at Maple Street Park on the 20th from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. So just on your calendars, I know there's an open house that night, but just a reminder that that's happening. It's going to be festive and informative, so please come, everyone. There is, for this work to, for this work to be effective and work in the community, we are, we need to train facilitators for the community conversations that are coming up in October, over four sessions during the month of October. So that facilitator training is on September 23rd, probably. There'll be confirmation of that by the end of the week. So if any of you are interested in being trained as a facilitator to make these conversations happen, you would all be well qualified and welcome for that. That email will go out later this week, so you'll have information on that. Also, are the four sessions in October, and those are going to be scheduled based on the group that we form and the availability of the facilitators. It's really important to us that each of the groups, which will consist of 12 people, are the right composition. So we're trying to get the people who are interested to agree to some groups and then what works for that group and the facilitator is how we're going to schedule those meetings in order to make those work. So if you're interested in being part of those conversations, also please let me or Pat know and we will make sure to get you on that list. The Voices work has been, Ben has been fantastic. He is doing all that work for the Facebook page and for all the communication with this group, with all of us, and I couldn't agree more about what a great job he's doing. So thank you to Ben. We have three students on the steering committee. Tess and Jamal are the president and the vice president of the student body this year. They have their first meeting tomorrow and will be introducing this work to the group and are really, work, doing some great work in bringing this, this work that we're doing in the community to the school. And I'm really encouraged about student involvement with those two in the lead. And Beth has been wonderful and available and is taking the lead on getting administrators and teachers into this conversation. And again, as I shared last week, making sure that this Voices work is well aligned with what's happening in the administration and what's happening at the board so that we're all working together towards that goal of informing the vision for the, for the community. And so if you are interested in any of that work, just let me know and we will include you in the group and move forward from there. I think that is it. Pat, did you have anything?
No, I mean, just what you touched on, I think that they were strongly encouraging that we try to get a board member for each group, or at least I heard Sue mention that a handful of times. So the more volunteers that we can get from this group to communicate.
That means five board members. We have three already, so if anybody else is interested, just let us know.
Okay. Anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay. So state and local updates, I think we already have seven out of 10 board members signed up for the regional. Okay. You, you were on the list that I looked at. So I looked at it today, so you were on the list.
That last chance email came out today.
Yeah. So I think we have eight out of 10 and Brendan told me he was going to sign up, so nine out of 10, it's sort of.
I apologize.
You can't.
But you're reading the updates, so we will bring back a report.
Right.
I may be late. I'll leave work and go right directly there.
Yeah, be the same, a few minutes.
And the food is the first half hour really.
Yeah, and it's informal and it's just simple to us usually. Yeah. So who, yeah, so it should be quite an interesting meeting, I think. I don't think I have any other state or local update, do you?
I don't think so.
Okay. So that takes us to agenda items. Does anybody have agenda items other than what we already have on our work calendar and our regular agenda? Okay. If you think of something, you cannot always email me. Our agenda meetings are usually the Monday of the week before the board meeting takes place. So next Monday morning would be our next agenda meeting. So if you think of something before then, just get in touch with me, okay?
You're, you're pretty much following this format.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we are. If anybody has a problem with the format, let us know, we'll discuss it. But that's what we're doing right now. Okay, takeaways. I guess one of the big takeaways is the information about the health care savings. What do you call it? I call it clawpack, but you call it.
Recapture.
Recapture.
I think I'll use recapture. Much more of a.
Yeah. Other things.
The life plan?
Yep, the school board's work plan. And, and maybe, I don't think it has to be a lot, but just we reviewed our self-evaluation. I think the community should know that that's work that we're doing.
Possibility two is your, we were talking about how to engage people in the budget, so if we could put at least the calendar out somehow.
No, a link to the calendar. That's not, that, you know, we should probably do that every month now through the budget season.
Usually if there's a slide or a presentation that gets up here, then it gets to Ben and then when I send him takeaways, he puts those in there.
He links it, yeah.
So everything that we see should be up for the public within the week.
Right. But I think if you provide a link in the takeaways and that may be something that people read as opposed to going to the school board section of the webpage. Okay, anything else? All right. Thank you all. Good meeting. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.